Good afternoon, welcome to the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, two o'clock. For commissioners, uh, work sessions and uh, like a welcome everyone here, make sure you're carrying a bottle of water for my big audience. And um. When you stand, it's a way to play anything again, since it's correct, just want to make sure I don't want to disrespect. So we're going to go right on into it then to the new business and it's discussion of roads, hallelujah.
Yes, Chairman, Commissioner, thank you. This is our kind of first of what we recommend is maybe three work sessions, those were. We were transportation and roads, we need to come back and talk about other projects, uh, because I know we, we did, there was a lot of focus on roads, but there's a lot of other projects as well. Then of course, we need to come back and talk about, uh, like important teaching and things of that nature. So we're going to do that, but this is the first of that. Work session, so I appreciate this allows me to plan if you're going to first be here. Whenever we're not in the middle of the year wondering about what's going on and what we, so. Just a brief, you know, comment to more transportation, we've got some dummies and some, uh. Some things to be done and then of course we're there and we're open enough when we talk about what we really want to do for the upcoming. Of course, you know, it is all like, you know, roads and transportation are one of the biggest thing that eating local government, anywhere has to face. It's the same problem everywhere you go, maybe with a different magnitude, and it may be addressed at the intersection instead of the dirt road, that's still a problem. Uh, and Bearwood County, of course, is no exception. We have approximately six hundred plus about us, uh, a few miles of local roads, Kelly. About three hundred and sixty of those paved, because we have about two hundred and forty miles of dirt road, okay, or other type. That we have Dubers Bridges, some small, uh, you know, some not so small. And if you want to kind of compare that, I think of one of our counties to the north, that's about sixty miles of dirt roads. Uh, so we have about four times as big as, as they do, so it just gives you an idea, okay? And of course, maintenance of the road requires a tremendous commitment with personal time and funding, personal time and funding. For example, if you with the three hundred and sixty miles of paved roads, if we were able to resurface fifteen miles a year, which we hadn't quite got to yet. It's going to take twenty-four year cycle to pay anything. And so that, that's just, just being a realist of what you're, what you're looking.
What is, why do we, the number fifteen, why is that?
And that's a, the number, we started out three or four, we got up to about twelve. Fifteen is just an arbitrary number, like Kevin would say, hopefully we'll get to be able to resurface fifteen miles a year. No real rivalry, you can put any number there you want, if you think it's twenty, which we hadn't got to, we take it as ten.
Well, I think there got to be some kind of rivalry, as you were saying, hundred, hundred fifty, so I'm assuming per resources or costs.
Yeah, so you use right now. Yeah, right now, we, we do, uh, in a good year, where we don't have a lot of patching, we've done about twelve, is that right?
Twelve.
So, I, you know, knowing that that number is not going to go up as, you know, substantially, I chose fifteen. Also knowing that what we're doing now is we're getting into roads that are no longer just a simple resurface. These roads are going to have to start being, uh, you know, full depth reclamation, et cetera. And then you're fifteen, they go down to eight miles.
Or five.
Or five miles. And so, so that makes a difference, that'd be on cost, probably, right?
What I pointed it is.
Yes.
That could, that could go to that per year for a while.
Right, it could. And then, and of course, there again, if you do that, you're a twenty-four year cycle. And, uh, of course, life expectancy in roads probably not going to be twenty-four years, especially a lot of we've got that we resurface that don't have a good basis. So there again, that, that number, uh, I guess what kind of get at this is. Despite our best efforts, it's going to be hard without some more work and some more knowledge to keep up with the, just the roads.
What is, I'm sorry, no, what is a good estimate for resurface of a mile of road?
I, I got it right. Oh, you're going to get, I'm going to get, okay, I'm going to get to it, totally give you all the numbers that, that you'll need. Of course, uh. You know, we're already how, we've, we've been how for years and years on our resurfacing, but I keep hearing we're only going to. Could three miles, maybe four miles a year, and we've, we've done a lot more since then, but we're so far behind that, uh. You know, we, it's really just hard to catch up, you know, a lot of our roads have already get to almost live cycle.
They are.
And we just can't hardly get that going.
You really can't look at it, it's going, well, twenty-four years, I was going to need it again, I mean.
It's, it's.
It, it just changes thing no matter what, for the next hundred years.
It's going to be over.
But getting something done is, that was another.
Absolutely, and that's what you gotta do, you just gotta. Tug away at it as much as you can for this year, but understand, you know.
What I'm saying is that we was to agree or had the funds and we're going to do fifteen miles a year. We don't want to tell the public that we're going to do fifteen miles a year, but you know, not do all this again twenty-four, even that, that's, that's sad, that's depressing, you know, that part, they're just glad we're getting it.
No, and what you're going to end up doing is if you, if you do that, do fifteen miles a year. When you get to that twenty-four year, you'll start over with that same fifteen miles again, and you'll just have to keep up to the cycle. Because the roads does not last for a certain amount of time.
You need some roads I hear, been like forty years.
That's right, that's right.
And you would think over a twenty-four year period, you're going to start having more revenue and be able to afford to do more miles per year, you have to count growth.
It's awesome.
Yeah.
Probably have more traffic too, so that's going to cut down on.
And another thing is that we were kind of tied for the general flow system, when with our, some of our, our regulations, we have like with that flow exemption. It keeps our digest growing as much as, as it normally would, because it freezes those vacations. And so it's just some of the things that we're, that we're facing, you know, we just, want you guys to understand. Now, ten years ago, uh, and I, I'll kind of repeat this up here to answer some of the questions, but ten years ago, we were researching. Paying that, uh. Uh, pretty almost we developed that, they need, uh, eight miles a year. And we did that with a, with a, uh, service treatment program. Service treatment now, got two or three companies in state of Jordan that did it. And, uh, I know one of them is really low, we had to use a tie, so we had to kind of go back to just asphalt now. Uh, but, uh, you know. You know, it's still one of those things that we, we just have to, have to deal with it. Uh, gradually, you know, with the center, we went up to maybe ten, twelve miles a year, but with the continued road failures, we had to spend more money. To repair the roads, uh, before we do research. And just resurfacing, uh, Mr. Williams, I think this is some of the questions you had here. Just resurfacing, if the road is in good condition, we don't have patching, we don't have a whole lot of anything. It's a hundred, about a hundred and forty thousand dollars a mile to just resurface it existing dirt road. Okay.
No, sorry.
Uh, resurfacing the pavement. Now, if you go in and you have a road that's fallen off apart, like Luther's building, have to do the full depth reclamation. Well, that runs about six hundred thousand dollars a mile. So you're talking four times much when you get to that point. And unfortunately, if you can't keep up with the roads, that's where you're going to go with a lot of.
That road should give it a lot of life, though.
Yeah, it should give it a lot of life, yeah.
It's been rebuilt.
It'll probably exceed that twenty-four year too, unless it's on a crazy avenue. So again, one of the key, of course, is repair it when the road gets, if it turns too far. And that old bill has been doing that for some of the, uh, little bit, if very, uh, that done, tried to catch some of those roads are not quite that, that bad yet to get those done. Uh, on dirt roads. In the past, you know, we've been scraping the roads every year, but we haven't had really, I would say, an active program, very, you can tell me from all of this, to. Reestablish additions or replace all these crossroads.
Correct.
We've been just doing scraping and maintenance. And as, uh, as far as, uh, paving dirt roads. Uh, up until last couple of years, there was only one dirt road that paved in the county in the last fifteen to twenty years. Allen Road, the only one, only one road.
So can I go back to, we're only doing resurfacing of dirt roads the last few years?
The grainy, it was quite, right.
Yeah, I know asphalt.
There weren't the reasons then.
It was, uh, probably up until the last few years, we didn't have the funding, T-SLOSS came into play. Uh, probably didn't have staffing, able to do it. We used about half of our, uh, uh, SLOSS to batch out a big and do those things. So dirt roads only got scraping and just routine maintenance like that.
And that was under the general fund.
Right.
And that's to, to all of that you just, you just said. No, but it's, it's not getting done like it should, because we don't have the fund and we don't have the staff.
Right, right. Well, we've tried to take some proactive steps to do that. But these guys have also, over the last two or three years, y'all have taken some roads. And really worked at re, restructuring those roads.
Redone all the pipes.
Redone all the pipes, everything, get the house, but it's, it's, it's time to, certainly we're doing it in the past, okay? So, eighteen, ten years ago, we had, you know, a lot of bridges were very poor condition as well. I remember when I first came to this road, when I went up and looked at the road and we said, nice, next time it rains, that road's going to wash out. Sure enough, that road washed out along with several others, but we got those done, we put in some big box covers, so, so we tried to, you know, to move forward and. These guys have made a lot of improvements on the roads and did a lot of working house. But the lack of funding and staffing was one of the reasons the road resystem was so straight and ready to prepare. So, like, the people, the guys in the past year had to work from a reactive instead of a proactive position. They had to react and things could be, and they couldn't be proactive because we didn't have staffing to work and do it. While, uh, they have moved forward with a, a more proactive approach, you know, many of the situations with transportation. Will always be reactive, because we have such factors, the weather, the traffic, timbering. Operations, all of that changes the dynamics on a daily basis. You go today and the road looks good, it's timbered, think it's going to be tomorrow it rains, it looks awful, it's just the nature of it. That's why it's an ongoing daily thing to, uh, try to, you know, keep up with.
Cornet, fine, right.
Right, yeah, cornet, that's what, I'm going to give you guys, uh.
So you're going to say we're doing, we intend to do some proactive stuff?
Yeah.
What is it?
Uh.
Road inspections, um, planning ahead and looking at the folks that are going to go out and, and stay, you know, prepared.
And I've got a section of that, I'm going to look at the future watch hours. So, uh. So what, in the back of this, this, uh, we just passed out, and you see there's a list of projects that we've done in the past. Uh, you see that there's quite a bit of those, but, you know, they've counted. Uh, we had a lot of, uh, culverts that washed out. Uh, twenty twenty-one, we made a lot of drainage containers, you guys did a lot of things in the past. And yes, with some of the really big ones we had to let out, but did a lot of them in the house to try to get that done. And that, uh, that's a good and bad thing, you have to stop, go do it. It puts everything else on hold, but we tried to upgrade the pipes and other stuff. We did that, maybe increase it a little bit if we could, and, uh, we hope that they will not, uh, come, come apart in the future. I know there's one road that the video storm has washed out, and you got one of them that I've cut bigger stand here, red, I think. And y'all fixed it, fixed it right, and it did not have a problem.
Carolina, Carolina County law, right, that's a church.
That's, that's an example of that. And then, it's another thing, so you got the little big road reclamation. Uh, you know, we spent about one to two million dollars on that. That took about, uh, probably seven hundred thousand or more of, of state funds, just over about five, come out of your slot. And, uh, see the twenty twenty-three current problems there, of course, some of those survived transportation, we do have a big project as well. Our twenty twenty-three big. Because we did some extra work on Luther'sville Road, which required a full depth reclamation, we ended up being what a, people wouldn't think a dollar a big project.
And it was had a few change orders coming, or approved, that's that.
So we stood a lot more than that, thirty percent, uh, that, had to deal with that.
So I'm still news, you reminded me again of the example, it's local basis, is who, of course.
In France, bro. France, yeah.
Yeah.
Based on the number of road miles that G-DOT gives you in certain line of lines, which is around seven hundred and.
Yes, a little bit over eight hundred, it's been, uh, few as five hundred and something, then it's, uh, up to, uh, eight hundred and something down.
So that's something we, we had to file forwards and all the money based on.
On a file for it every year.
We, we submit, we submit this, yeah. But the county has to max the minimum of thirty percent.
We've done that, we've done that, but it's upcoming year.
Mm-hmm. Well, we have, I'm telling you, we've been looking to have a board, uh, determine exactly what roads you want. That's what we do need determined by, really prior to our next meeting, because, uh, people's going to be trying to work up the numbers. And so we need some feedback, as I know, what you would like to, to see, uh, in that, um. And we'll try to work those roads in as soon.
I'm sorry, let me cut it out.
Oh, no, no. One of the things that you asked, I've got, you have a program, we just had.
Uh, everything on this twenty-three and the big is not done.
It's not finished.
So, but funds are ready set aside for each one.
There, those funds are already in place.
So we don't need to say, like, in continuation, that we need to, with twenty-four, if.
Yeah.
And the funds are already, they.
The county car received funds.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, and we got, John, that have the SLOSS, well, the allocation portion is, is clear.
So once, once, once the project's complete, the county would just have to take the invoices on from the contract and submit those. Uh, like financial insurance to the state that we did that work and how much of the town covered with a forty percent or fifty percent.
And I, and I've got some financial for John to sort stuff out, for you guys a little bit, we take it out, those encumbrations are there. So. Uh. Again, while we move, move forward with a, uh, proactive approach, these situations, as I said earlier, that's always there with transportation, every day is a new day. Yeah, funding sources that we've had. Uh, so general fund, we budget every year for the, for the staff, that covers staffing, some equipment, materials, and routine maintenance, that's what you can deal with. Where you do it versus anything else, general fund, but we try to put everything we can back into it, especially first, you know, for like the sales staff. So we do have, have that. Now, the state funds from the big program are used for transportation improvements, it's based on the number of road miles. And some, a few other factors that G-DOT factors in. Requires a thirty percent match with local funds. And the amounts do vary from year to year, the past amounts raised from about well over five hundred thousand, maybe five fifty up to about eight hundred thousand this year. A lot of that depends on what the state takes in in terms of their revenue, and then they allocate it back out in form to the counties. All the cities get that too, if they make application. You have to, uh, spend it. With a three-year period, you can't carry it for more than three years of the year. That's not a problem with us, some of the cities like to say there's, that when they have the dollars to be doing bigger projects. So, that is the, uh, that is the little big program, that's a big part of our, our transportation program that we do every year. And basically, those little dogs we had, we use a product, fifty percent of our SLOSS collections now. Transportation, those are used to batch and big. And like I say, we, we try to always do more than the thirty percent. Thirty percent, you know, get seven hundred, that's only give you a billion dollar project, our project's always been one point two up. And currently is two point one, so if you think over that, eight hundred thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty goes out of SLOSS.
I'm confused again there.
Yes.
Earlier, y'all said it was a thirty percent match of local fund.
Right.
We average five hundred dollars a year in rent, which means we would have to max hundred fifty.
Yeah, we, we average, we get from a big every year, we get it. We have gotten as little as five, um, got as big as eight, it's probably closer if you want to average it out on top, probably seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty.
Seven fifty.
Right, and what they do with that. Is they'll require you to put in thirty percent of that as a badge, as a, right, to do it. And once you have some.
Stay to a total of nine seventy-five.
Right. And then, of course, what we've always done is put more in there, because, you know, we want to do transportation, while you got them out there working on it. Uh, you can get more about, you can get more about, so that's what we have historically done with that, that's why our numbers are. You know, at one point two, uh, or whatever for our total contract. So, we use about fifty percent of the SLOSS dollars we collect is toward that transportation. And SLOSS, you can use it for anything that's capital, uh. And, uh, it's a six percent, one, uh, it's a six-year, one percent sales staff, it was SLOSS. And it is in April of twenty twenty-six. So, really one of those things we need to look at, uh, it's not a due tax, it's the situation, and, uh, and we need to, uh. We need to certainly have that. Uh, our current total revenue. Is four hundred and forty-six thousand, John, correct me if I, if I missed your numbers here, but. Commitments are five or five, six hundred, so we have a short deficit right now, that's not really an issue or concern. Because really, to the time, these, uh, commitments, which is that funds that go back to batch the big, come into play, we're going to collect it more money than we have. Plus, we have, uh, some additional lend time to, additional months to be able to collect it. At the end of the day, we should have about four point two million dollars in SLOSS collected. And we use fifty percent of that toward our transportation, that'll give us two point one million to put toward our bats, our big and stuff, okay? So.
For the year twenty twenty-four.
This will be twenty twenty-three, or, or the next year, probably it's going to be twenty-four next, uh, twenty-four was probably in twenty-five.
The two point one B is going to cover the product we already committed in twenty twenty-seven.
But, well, let's say the twenty twenty-three program is here at the end of twenty.
Yeah.
That's already paid for.
Yeah, it's not included in that two point four.
So we can do four point one million dollars next year.
Let me, let me do the other shoot here.
Those are how much, yeah. Uh, Commissioner.
So what you get, the, what you get is SLOSS, John, with the figures, better, you have, uh. Currently, we have a bank balance, um, three eighty. And we have a fund, a investment fund.
Yes, sir.
And that's about another fifty, and so our total revenue is four forty-six. But we have commitments, this is where we've already allocated the dollars to go toward those twenty twenty-three products and, and other products that are still outstanding.
And the L-Meg is coming out of general fund, so this excludes the L-Meg, this is just what SLOSS.
Yep.
Is on the hook for still, we are.
All the deals. What we need with the roads, we're doing that by equipment, by parts, about.
Yeah.
Step in the shop.
Out of that two point one million, we've already paid one point one million. SLOSS portion less about five hundred thousand, about eight hundred some thousand to come from L-Meg out of general fund.
So that's what you're saying, total estimated collect based on the air, this is four point two million.
Yes, sir, I would determine.
Now, the, the end of.
The expiration.
What you believe is around two point one B in twenty twenty-four, two point one B in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, well, what we do is leave this, we've been using the job, that's the total SLOSS, right?
Total, total clip, we get allocation every month of about a hundred and forty-seven thousand.
But see, what you have with that, if you have other, uh, capital projects that you consider you're going to do with that SLOSS. So that's my point earlier, we've been using about fifty percent of that balance for transportation. So that's where I get to two point four, fifty percent of the four point two, is the two point one billions that we're going to have.
Only two more years, we're going to cut that in half a year.
Rock for a year. You've been rocking one. That's actually, okay? And then, so, uh. So that is the, the big, the big of SLOSS, the river, that's what we've been trying to build. Now, T-SLOSS is a one-of-a-kind sales tax that must be dedicated to transportation, transportation improvements, unlike SLOSS. Which you can build, uh, a building with, a lot of things with, this is strictly transportation, nothing else. So it could be improving your roads, uh, bridges, uh, paving dirt roads, it could be equipment that you would use, uh, on transportation. And, uh. This relates back to the T-SLOSS information, guys, look at this a minute, I'll, 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 I'll go to that in just a minute, but. T-SLOSS was originally approved by the state. As a regional sales tax for transportation, uh, many years ago. And I really felt like at that time, and I've heard it many times since, and there was a cop out on behalf of legislators, because they didn't want to have to face the. The taxpayers, they didn't want to have to say, they wanted to look like a good guy either way, because we had to have some more money for transportation, you know, raise tax. Right, so rather than they would address the state level and provide more money for the big, they decided, well, let's just let the counties do it. The regions do it, and then if it passes and people complain about taxes going up, we can say it. But we give y'all the right to vote, and then if it didn't pass, and there wasn't any extra money to do it, and people complained, and they were saying. Well, y'all could pass it, so they were going to come out and look like the good guy, and the counties and the regions go come out and look like that, one way or the other. So, at the end of the day, they said, okay, we're going to do it by regions. And, uh, and there are only four regions in the state of Jordan that passed. And, uh, they were generally fairly rural areas, uh, there's a map, I think, in here to show you where those regions are. So it left everybody else, we were in the, uh, Pre-River region, it did not pass. It didn't matter if everybody was there with, kind of voting for it, we could have passed it, but we had to deal with all the, the door. That had a much greater population, and they were tied into the, the rural, it was going to go to Barnum, it was going to help Barnum, and all this stuff, so they were voting against it. So it depended what we did, we looked up with it. So, in twenty seventeen. The legislators decided, hey, let's go back, and we'll improve it where individual counties can go. Okay? And if Bearwood County, we put that together in twenty nineteen. Uh, the Board of Commissioners did approve the call for, uh, recreational, as soon as it's overwhelming, we're approving the T-SLOSS. And our current collection of T-SLOSS ends in April of twenty twenty-five, okay? Which technically, at the end, end of the year, which will get collections over. And this brochure here, this is a PowerPoint presentation, I love to say, read, read with you guys, we've got a question, I'll answer it for you. This is a PowerPoint presentation that we made through various community groups, uh, and we invited it with, 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 uh, churches. Uh, homeowners association, whoever, and we talked about history of the T-SLOSS and SLOSS, but what we're doing is that our plan with it was. Here's those, uh, regions in the state that passed, so everybody else failing, everybody, uh, going to, uh. Everybody going to, probably, probably county, uh, west of, uh, that would be. Very west, or east part of the state, we buy, okay? We project, we raise, we're going to develop over five-year period, but, but we also have to share that with the city, so our fund was originally drafted about six point five billion. John, I think we're not going to pay with that, are we?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, so, we're pretty, I'll tell you about five, we'll jive out in, uh.
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty-five, voting time, go to twenty-four. We got it, we got it set for you guys to vote in May of twenty twenty-four. Okay, now, I wish we voted last year, voted in your ear. The reason that, for that is, oh, when I say last year, this year, I wish we'd voted this year. The reason for that is because if it fails, you have to wait a year, we put it back on that, okay? And I'm not really worried about the failure, but we need to get out and, and, and do our work with it, but it's. If, if, if you didn't have SLOSS, if you didn't have T-SLOSS, it'd be catastrophic for what our, you know, county had in terms of spending for transportation. You would pretty much go back to the day where what we were doing was maybe scraping that, that thirty percent up to do a few roads. And then, uh, whatever barrier they could do with, uh, this pure maintenance. And so it's, it's critically important. Uh, T-SLOSS is one of those proactive things that we've done, that kind of pushed it forward, and we're just now really beginning to see some benefits of it. I mentioned earlier that we had, um. Paid one road, uh, in twenty years, fifteen or twenty years. Well, since then, we paid two roads, three roads. And we are, and you guys have just approved Newland, which is another major road project. So, uh, all those benefits. So, uh, all those benefits come from, uh, you know, T SPOSS, because that's what we dedicated the T SPOSS on. Plus.
Go the quick, that's, uh, that's, uh, for those colors, trickle down, and that's.
Yeah, that was there too, so, so a lot of things we've done were in its T SPOSS.
There.
And this is just a, you know, this kind of a, look, I'm happy questions, I'll be happy to answer anything, uh, we have.
So, uh, he's, okay. But you. He said, we're doing good on T SPOSS, does that mean we, we good, got money in there, we're doing good.
Yes, sir. You're at, if, with the projects still left, Strickland Town Road and Beulah Evans, right now, if you were to finish those, we'd have one point one million in bank ready to spend as of today. These are, these are, after these are committed. So, yeah, you have one point one that you can spend today on T SPOSS projects.
So, Craig, we're doing better than this ten million dollar five year end.
Uh, I don't know what our total collection would be, uh.
It's not, it's not that.
Yeah, at the end of the day, we will have, as John said, we already have one, one billion in the bank, and at the end of the day, we'll have three point two billion dollars in the bank in T SPOSS.
It's covering twenty four.
And that's taking away the Strickland Town Road and taking away Beulah Evans to see.
So they did a little too many in here, we've been getting, and they take that out again, so we, we're gonna beat that ten million dollars.
We'll make the six point five in the year.
Yes, yeah, so, and tha- and that's good, that's what we want to be able to do. So, right now, uh, T SPOSS again ends April twenty twenty five, and, uh, uh, we're not supposed to, I, I think you guys can select and fish it as, uh, re- re- first employee, I, I'm not really supposed to, but I will be excited to shut back and suggest to them and say that it's critical that we get those two things, though.
Do we not put together some kind of free presentation, uh, critical, just to put on our, 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 our.
So we need.
Case of youth for theirs.
Right.
Because they couldn't speak, pack it out with their memory of every household for their SPOSS, so.
And what we did with SPOSS, with fire, just with T SPOSS, is, is this basically. We went to, uh, PowerPoints, we went to every civic organization, all the churches, school system, everything that's in high importance to cities. One of the things that people don't, don't stop and understand is, they may say, well, I gotta pay tax one way or the other. But here's the thing, when you get sales tax, and I don't really know what the numbers are here, but they're, they're higher pursuit by things that are. But in like, uh, the Jordan County, we did some analysis on it. And years ago, I mean, years and years ago, before they got all shopping, everything they now, forty percent of the revenues came from outside, the people who lived outside, stopping, coming to shopping and buying and whatever. And I would imagine we're not far off with that here. So who wouldn't want to have, uh, be able to put in sixty percent and get a dollar back out of it? That's a pretty very good return, so that's, uh, that's important.
You make sure public moves, you just station, you have here, and what's generated, you can take twenty meals.
That's right, that's right. And that was, uh, we like this.
That's what it would take, sir.
So, forty meals in that, supplement what we've, we've earned in the. Yeah, so, that's where we all with that. Now, our first uncommitted fund balance in T SPOSS. If, uh, make sure, keep straight with this, we've got those. No better than that. We've got one point one three, uh, one point one three billion dollars. Plus remaining collection of approximately two point zero eight million, or a total of three point two billion dollars uncommitted right now. Remaining in T SPOSS.
Right.
Okay, so, hold it up, you got two point one million, it's SPOSS, fifty percent of what you got, and three point two billion dollars in T SPOSS.
And that's why you see in the investment pool, we moved two point five million, because we're gaining about four point, almost five percent interest by being in the investment pool right now.
But the dollars, the penalties, that's one, that's getting it out.
Forty eight dollars. Takes, takes forty eight hours to get the money back from the investment pool. No, sir.
That's why we all been thinking, yeah. So, some of the leaves in the space right there, that I have, that we don't want to disrupt in this community, we, we need to continue our research. Use of the big, and SPOSS. And, uh, as I said earlier, the per mile cost will increase dramatically as the road structures continue to deteriorate. We've also got a situation where, in the past, we have, uh, tried to address and moving around the district just to get everybody something there, and that's worked out well. What we have now, excuse me, is, uh, we've done a lot of the shorter ones, we're gonna have to start keeping some of these longer roads. And so what it may or will be that it may couple of districts will have to kind of join together, that they got some roads that we really need to do, because there's some, we got some roads that are terrible, terrible.
So it's just been a precedent that you, okay, do you have the money on side, just not necessarily about already the needs of the counties reasonably, or people who just say, you, uh, which.
Yep, and, and it's worked.
Not true, we got.
No, the, the, and, and with experience, brother Kelly, uh, that was what, you were getting there for a long time. But you got to a point where you had to look at the overall, strategy had to change, growth had to change. Have to look at that overall in order to be able to.
Barry, point out too, uh, Pope Road actually touched three different districts and all, that back resurfacing, right, to do that continuously, so because of the, uh, they're covering the different districts. And another example is what I had here, because, um, Buster was on one side of the road, and I was on the other, and we got that resurfaced.
True.
Um, this gap made from our, uh.
And then on top of that, uh, like, uh, Lucasville, touches a couple of different, uh, districts. So we're just gonna have to look at that going forward. And put the money where the, the dollar, where the most needed is that big.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with that, even if it's, if your district has to give up.
Yeah.
You're twenty percent.
Right.
To get where it needs to be, I mean, that's what needs to happen.
Right, absolutely.
But this county has always had a north versus south issue. Which is why I went to the even dispersion, with, okay, but in some corners of the county, you don't need to even, for the roads and amount of traffic is on.
Right.
Well, we got areas that suffer, well, we're gonna be upset because we want to make it even with some, I didn't know need it.
Right. Put it to where it needs to be. Absolutely.
You know, do the thing enough.
Well, you, and after a period of time, you pull out of things, you're, you can't do that, you're letting the big projects go by while you're trying to.
Yeah, we end up doing parts, so some things don't need to be done, and that money could've been used to solve a lot of issues, so, yeah, just because.
Absolutely, okay. Now, another thing that we need is, is reconstruction of our dirt roads, including regrading, crown, ditches, established, cross street pipe. Replaced, cleaned out with additional gravel and add, okay, that's what we really need. And we need some replacement to our cones, some small bridges, and other construction.
That's a question here, sure, before we go too far down in the road. Because I'm confusing you, because the papers, and what y'all said, they all say two hundred, three hundred things.
Well, understand those papers were done, uh, back, uh, is the twenty.
Well, that's fine, I think you used, SPOSS, the government regulation is, we have to max thirty percent.
Will be.
That's, that'll be.
It'll be.
That'll be, that has to come up, SPOSS, if you use SPOSS.
We need to use SPOSS, doesn't happen, yeah. We could use T SPOSS, we could use general SPOSS. In fact, uh, you can't have a T SPOSS if you don't already have SPOSS.
But then, LME maxes ten percent in a regional T SPOSS.
Right, in a regional T SPOSS. But remember, our regional, our regional T SPOSS, thank you. And so we don't get that ten percent batch anymore, but you know, in reality, when people make a lot of that, that's nothing more than language flow out there to make them sound better, because you're gonna put more ten percent in anyway, if you are, you're. See, we, we, all we have to put in is thirty, we probably do the infected aboard percent. Because, again, as we said, we got contractors out there, they're on site, that is, is the chief that's paying to get it done. And, uh, and we have to run it, so that's what we do.
Okay, so that's fun, all right, so that's making sense, but it's a note for planning purposes. We planned, we got an intensity memo.
Then we'll get it.
Sure, see, and we made a sign while we're out there, makes the most sense to do it.
Which is fine, we have to present a, a project list, too, that the state's gonna cost about this much, and we can match this much, and then they can prepare projects versus necessarily dollars.
But to me, that's the only way we ever would get over the thirty percent more, is because the projects was for a billion dollars. Eighty seven hundred thousand, we gonna spend three hundred thousand, we decided to do that for half mile, on our own ticket.
Yes.
That's the only way we didn't get fifty percent.
Right, and, and she needed to do that, because, uh, again.
Well, yeah, I get it, the whole getting out there.
Yeah, that's what.
Trying to understand something, yeah.
Yeah, believe me, it's, it's a, it's not as simple as, uh, moving, so that's.
I see, dude, it's not as hard, it's, uh.
And I put exactly there, it was the safety all the way up there on Barsh, and we had a, a rest issue for the roads breaking up there on front bottom. Because they were in proximity, it was cheaper to go and get them around the corner.
Absolutely.
And that's why we voted on to add that, but we just did that.
They don't claim that we got a code, you know, anything more. Say we got a road, there's some, we got this much money left over, we got one road that's a mile long.
Yeah.
But we got enough money to pay that, but it really don't make it. Can we carry that money, not pave this road, and take that money and put it on next year?
Yeah.
That is what.
But, but only after three years at a time, you can't carry more than three years.
But there's probably gonna never, the size of a county, be, probably never gonna be, uh, that you don't need to be able to spend all of that in being, probably spend it all.
We should even find ourselves saying.
And, and, I'm just saying that we got, you know, got so much money left, and, and we got a four mile road that really needs paving, but we don't have enough money to pave that four mile.
Right.
So we jump over here and pave a one mile road that really don't need it. I say we just save the money and next year pave the four mile.
Absolutely.
Yeah, put it with that.
You don't have, you don't have to spend it all.
Right, you don't, you don't.
And I know, like you're saying, that's, it, it, probably that fairly rarely happened, but a lot of roads are, you know, like, some roads are six mile long.
Right.
So you, if you got a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand dollars left over, you can't pave that road, but, so we don't just have to spend it.
No, and, and generally what we would do, and what we would recommend of that, is you just not spend SPOSS dollars. Spend all of your money, if you can, but you don't have to. Cities save theirs, uh, where they can get enough money to do a big project, where they only available to get fifteen thousand, they need, uh, forty thousand dollars to split. But yes, you can do that, and I would never recommend that we just pave a road, just pave it, we need to be sure that it's deep. Yeah, we're about to get on our, our knees, basically dirt roads, what we really need to do is some extensive work with that, and I know that was, you know, pretty expensive. Uh, we also have a lot of cones, and small bridges, and other drainage structures, we're constantly trying to deal with and replace. Just, we have a lot of water in this county, and a lot of, uh, of, uh, you know, drainage, so there's a lot of bridges here. Proactive, mentioned earlier about some of the proactive things that we've done, and, uh, I'll mention this, some of them, they not, they not seen proactive, but, but they really are. The road conditions have been graded for all the county roads, and I think Billy Russell does some work over the dirt roads, and they're buried. So we have a list, a pretty good feel of what things are, what most critical things are, et cetera. Roads, cones, bridges, uh, have been designed and bid in house whenever possible. And we've done a lot of those in house, we've done a lot more in house than we've left out there. And that saves y'all substantial, saves us the taxpayer substantial amount of time, yeah, but.
But when we're short staffed, that's got us in this situation.
Yeah, but, but I'm talking about what's likely to be built. It's not, not out here, but it's like, like, those people. We can do that.
Before COVID, I don't have any pipe to put in there, twenty twenty one. Well, we did a lot, but then COVID did, we lost a bit of staff.
Right, yeah. Now, you, another thing we've done proactive, but this is not showing up right now, but it will show up in the future. We reworked all of our written specifications, uh, on new subdivisions, where they would, uh, be of a, of a tight structure that they will last, uh, for an extended period of time. They're gonna have, uh, if they're smaller lots, they're gonna have, uh, curved gutter section, uh, drainage. Before, we had, uh, had to be compacted soil with a ditch in the half, and we've got some roads and subdivision roads, and got about that much you go from the foot, kick on, kick it, pave it up. And the new, new way they will not, so what you get out of that is that the developers' cost, you'll get a long lasting road, it's much better. It's also required of pipes and these road, the concrete, and so, you know, if that doesn't rust out, so we're not cutting, do it, so those are real proactive things that we have. Another thing we've done, uh, is, is proactive, is we have addressed what we found is, is our biggest issue with dirt roads. Biggest issue with dirt roads is if Valter comes in, he puts in a hundred houses off a dirt road, he paves the road in with a bit of a paving with. And he unleashes the, uh, hundred houses and the three, four hundred car trips a day that go through onto a dirt road that is almost impossible for us to maintain. We start out this morning, everybody goes to work, it rains, come back, it's, it's a nightmare. And we've seen that, that's why we've tried to address, Beulah Evans, who addressed, uh, was, was a few, about a few, a little bit, a couple now, uh, it would be, that were, were very similar to that. So in the future, what they'll have to do, if they want to do that, if they want to have a higher density, they got to pave the county, though. Or they can cut back and they can have five acres, which will substantially reduce the number of houses in that development, that's about it, dirt road. And, uh, the other thing that we've done is, is a majority of the store damage coverage, uh, have been repaired in house for fever, even flooding, these guys have done a good job. Probably just briefly about equipment, we have three motor graders. And if you talk to the staff, we probably use at least four as a bid with, so we're down the road, we probably do twice that many, but at least to, to move forward. Um.
We don't have enough people to drive them.
Yeah, we also say, another thing is, when we add equipment, we also have to consider staffing.
You can, you can cover four.
You can cover four.
Cover four, correct?
And, and, you know, we.
Let's not do anything else, you know, right?
Oh, not necessarily, I got some guys that can do, can do both, so when they need to run the motor grader, I got the, the crew there that can do it as well.
And we're also working on improving specific skills, and so we have a pilot skilled motor grader operator coming in, hopefully, and then so we're recruiting for these specific needs, so that we can add on, you know, prostrating more and more equipment.
And it also motor grading this late spring to early fall job, and we, we, we have the weather to do some other things, if we need to. We're also, uh.
You got, Steve, that dump truck we approved the other day, do we have it now?
Is it?
Was it on the road?
It's got stickers on it, uh, we gotta check.
I don't know if we got insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah, just put on insurance.
It is.
It's covered, I'll make it.
Yeah. Both by, next thing, equipment, is a dump truck, you got to just. That's right, y'all, y'all, we're asleep.
I haven't seen you now.
I know you have, so I didn't, I didn't finish them till like after.
You kept talking about equipment, I wanted to know what the dump truck.
It gets ready, you gotta just be putting it. Asphalt, hot dogs, we got to have, we talked about that, that allows us to.
It has been approved prior, so we just, we didn't have the trucks and equipment, but, but it's just a tool. Like, you know, you don't have certain tools, you can't do that job.
And it, it'll, it, what, warms the asphalt back over, allows us to do a better patch, is that right?
Yeah, and you can also use plant mix and just reheat it. Uh, they promote us to be a recycler, but it's too expensive to add the, to add it in there to make recycled asphalt, so best thing to do is just use it during the winter with coal patch, you can use the cheaper hot mix. You can buy a load, and then break up into chunks, and then put it back in there, and you get it up, use it overnight, and you have a plant mix that's a lot cheaper. And then we got the spray fracture, and you just, well.
Right. And we've got a tar silo over here, we, we're working, we're trying to get that thing back up and operational, and, and use it yet. And of course, another thing is continue replacing the vehicles, I know we have to have cars, so or trucks, maybe a couple of jobs every year, just to keep that fleet ready to go. Uh, so here, here's some of the costs, again, this kind of silver lining. Uh, resurface the doorway, pave roads, hundred and forty thousand dollars, right? The FDR, guy who grinded everything, got put that concrete in, we talked about today, put a really tough good base, put the top from there, six hundred thousand dollars.
No, that would have had to cover the twenty one feet too, so it could be a little less, could be a little.
So that was forty one feet, so we need what, six, five fifty, six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we got some areas that don't quite need, uh, uh, full depth reclamation, but they need a lot of patch, those will fall somewhere between six hundred and a hundred and forty, so just depends on the road. And again, you know, grading the roads with these guys, we can be able to come back and recover what that needs to be. We also did an analysis, what did we take, we just made an application, three inches of gravel on the dirt roads. And with contracted total price of that, to add three inches of gravel for one mile is fifty six thousand. Though that sounds like a lot, but gravel doesn't go very far when you start stretching it down to, on a mile, about a twenty feet, so.
That's how you make it on a mile. But how wide?
Probably twenty feet.
That's not just, what's on the rail, that's getting, how many feet's on the rail?
Fifty six thousand dollars.
There are five thousand two hundred eighty feet from that one.
It's fifty six thousand dollars.
But it's fifty six thousand dollars if you're doing. It's not just the cost of gravel.
From there, there's general gravel, mate, you know, might have to take a load out, it's really wet, but you're not having all fifteen hundred loads in there, it's just a stack.
Right, we got a lot of load we need to withstand. Now, reconstruction dirt road, we use this off of bids we had on, at least. You go in and you do regrading, regrading, rest action drains, place repair, cross drains, side drains, that's about a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And, uh, you know, that can get you into a good situation with roads going forwards, but again, it's expensive, remember it only cost a hundred and forty to, uh, resurface the road. So, uh, construction, the reconstruction dirt road is actually a bit more expensive.
Yeah, I was trying to write all this, how much?
Hundred, hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, right?
That number, fifty some thousand and three inches thick, is that cost of gravel and the work or just cost of gravel?
Cost of gravel and the haul.
Alright, cause a four inches thick, it should only be forty nine thousand two hundred eighty dollars.
This was cost of, uh, yeah, this was cost of haul.
I'm just spreading. Cause I, I would gravel all the time, by the square foot and so forth, so if you take twenty times five two, it's a hundred and five thousand six hundred square feet. You divide that by sixty, it takes seventeen hundred and sixty tons. And on average, twenty eight, thirty dollars a ton is forty nine dollars. That's four inches thick, nothing.
I mean, this was based on a bid that we received.
Oh, that's a bid, oh, I thought, I thought you were saying that's what's going, that's hard calls to get that, though. If we're trying to, that bid then is too high on, on.
It's, it's, uh, they're following it out there.
That part, the, the numbers I'm using is hauling and spreading.
Yeah. So anyway, that was, that was what we had on, but feedback, and I think we actually, cause we do it, some of the hauling and spreading gravel over the, uh, first road is. So, Bill, this fifty six thousand forty three, three is your gravel dirt road, that is based on the price of you have received, well.
Thompson truck.
Thompson truck. And then, of course, uh, some of the major projects we have underway, you live in those. Sir.
Thompson truck?
Yes.
Does she give you a pro ton price? Do you have that?
I don't have it with me here, it's based on the northern part of the county that holds it. And then it's like Woodbury section, and then southern section. All of those. Twenty seven, I think it's twenty seven seventy five on the northern section, twenty nine seventy five on the midsection, and thirty one on the larger road, the pressure line. And everyone's at a price as well.
So, you live in this road, we're about to finish up, uh, COVID over, over, uh, turned out difficult. And of course, we finish it up for the big, we'll get back into you. Okay, the next question is, where from here? And I just want to point out that we're not, we've talked about this already, we're not going to resolve on the young problem. They're gonna go, well, this could be a work in progress forevermore, and we just have to keep on working. These blocks that's blocked and expired in the near future. And we need to plan now for, uh, but if a baseball program is educated public, these blocks is coming up in the name, something that needs to become a part of what we do. And also, I think these interisms, what we work on in detail, we get out, do a, a lot of, you know, work on these roads and gravel, I think that, that'd make the world different. So, uh, the options I have, and then we'll turn it over to a unique discussion, we'll see staffing and the thing is, we do an every application of gravel for the dirt, it does resolve all our pockets, but it could provide some immediate improvements in that. And it could be incorporated in some future road improvement, we might have to use, uh, uh, the grain oil and other things, something for cleaning the ditches out and stuff, we might have to change a little bit about methodology of that, but it could, could be done. Uh, we do need to finalize those big projects, cause, uh, I don't build these to get those calculated up, but we're supposed to have them turned in before.
I need to have them turned in by.
And leave, so everybody in and get them.
That's preferred by G D O.
They would give us support tab, it's, it's kind of, we'll talk about that. And, uh, just asking, there's other projects that you guys won't have considered, uh, the procedures you need to see. And I did want to make one important thing that, you know, that, that you mentioned earlier about what it was about, uh, you know, we talked about designing stuff and, and, uh, put together bid packs in our little house, and, and we do that, mentioned that, you know, of course, does that cut into the staff, it does really cut into Barry's staff, but it does cut in what we're doing here at our offices. And, uh, so what we would ask, I guess, is just to make sure we're doing the most production we can. When you guys asked us to put together a bid package, we want to be sure that that's something we really want to do before we go out and get to do the, the expense of it, cause it's, it's pretty expensive to put these things together, and, uh, and we do have a limited amount of time. And so I, I want us to try to do that, now, I'll, I'll give you an example of, uh, like you live in, you guys proved that, we appreciate it. We did that in-house, if you'd have bid that out from engineer, had them designed that thing, developed that right away, you'd be looking at about two hundred thousand dollar price tag that they didn't charge you when you did the road at all. And, uh, so, uh, so we're glad to do that in-house, that if we can, but, uh, if there's things that you guys feel like, like, we just don't support that. Then just let us know, we, we will go down the road and try to put those together, we'll play together with you guys as a board and wall to try.
I think kind of where that story is at Ellis Road, and, um, partially, again, I'll take some blame for that, not going and looking at it. I didn't believe it, how intense all this process was.
Yeah.
Being muted. But I was somewhat con- person, the, the team that was already here was giving me a road for already this.
Yeah.
Based on being, the population and traffic, and then once we do go see it, it was nowhere near where that was at. But the question would be, you know, how does it get that high rate then? I think it goes back to the twenty percent each district, so my, so that's what I'm gonna do, so my district is whatever, or is politically motivated, is the only reason it got pushed there for, because what was going on on that road? So I have to think on the list to do, based on.
That was Ellis, Bishop, Rant, or Creed, and some of those are with Ellis. I went out, ten dollar house, was on the facts, essentially about ten dollar house that we utilized that road. And then all the complaints either Mr. Dean got him last year, people just prayed, and all came about how many he's got.
Yes.
And that's true, that went early, early in the year, early, late, late winter, early December, yeah, and that kind of handled it.
It, it, it.
I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to be rude with, either way, I'm thinking some fault in it, early loans, understand this process, I didn't even go look at it.
Yeah. And of course, you know, you, you look at it, again, it's just like we talked earlier, look at it today, they look, well, if you look at it January after the rain and all those cars that come out, they look terrible. Obviously, it looked terrible, it's, y'all had a lot of calls.
That's the, that's the big issues, the calling and the complaints, and then like I say, y'all do beautiful evens, and it's gonna be that much more. Well, y'all do beautiful evens, you know, we want our faith, and it's just gonna be a constant. We need gravel, we need rock, we need fire, you know, that's it.
My question for you.
But then we look back right here, where it says twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two COVID, and major drainage replacements and repairs, Ellis Road's on that list.
That's only for major colds that probably washed out.
Yeah, but that's, but I mean, I'm just saying that was, that was a road. Yeah.
Well, let me ask you this right here, then, uh, I don't care which road it is, you want you to go in and do this dirt road, or go in and do this road, or go in and do that road, it's all the same, it's the same process, it's just a different location.
Right.
We might be doing a house. Or, it was ten thousand square foot slab or forty thousand square foot, it's, why would Dean have to spend two hundred thousand dollars for an engineer, why couldn't you just have these guys that did roads go out and tell them, say, we want you to go, just like take Piedmont and two of them, we want you to go out to such and such road, we want a bid from you, and you just tell them what you, go, we want that up against, we want, it's just this, 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 that done to it, and we need a bid, they know what needs to be done.
But they won't have the elevations, they won't have the drains, they won't have all of that unless they do a design building. And so that's my point, that's why I said we should go out and spend them about a dollar. I'm just saying that if you did do that, based upon what engineering, uh, cost per construction project, look at one half million dollar project.
You're not gonna get it competitive clear, then we'll, we'll have a verbal. They all need to be bidding what you want, same.
That's why the specs are so important, plus on top of that, all of that right away had to be required. We didn't have any right of, so we did all that in the house too, so if you.
Yeah, we should do that, just, just like you did with Bill and Ellen, I mean, we need right of way, we built this, do the process.
But a lot of times, you'll have, uh, if you do a design building, they will go out, they will show you what you need, they'll do a survey on it, have all this stuff, right of what's gonna be required. We, we avoid it, and we avoided it by just using some, some techniques that work, for example, instead of having to survey all the roads, what we did was we picked a corner of the road and said this could be X number of feet, thirty feet of the centerline existing. So, so people maybe gave up five, some maybe gave up ten, but in reality, it was all thirty foot of the centerline, so, so what I'm saying is, if we went out and we, we had the time and experience and everything to do that, the same accounted a lot of money to do this, cause they would have been one heck of a road, and I don't think you could have got, they did a good job if you did. You know, bearwell kind of used to do that with the paint. And, uh.
I mean, I know you gotta have specs, but I'm just saying, you know, when you're just redoing a road that's already there and so forth, uh.
But this is, Ellis, I mean, this road is gonna be more than just redo, it's gonna be the grade, it's, everything, it's gonna, it's kind of like.
There was a section in there that's recreated, recreated low point in there, because from the both, both hills, it's just, you know, roated over the years, and now there's no, there's no drainage and it's just flat, it's a big, but I had to draw, kind of draw up a profile, tell them how much we wanted to lower that road to get it back to where it was driven, and not create a drainage problem, so that's some of the little things we did.
Yeah.
Let me ask.
You live in, we had to do some grade and lower a hill and.
I'm, I'm Ellis, and I was pretty much like Mount Hill, the, the number of houses that went in off of subdivisions or whatever. It's pretty comparable, because you've got those, uh, streets that come off, the houses that are, that were built in there. You've got a section there that after, after, um, just, it's just halfway through, then there's very few houses on by the name, like Mount Hill, and once you get, once you get down past that last big subdivision, driveway or whatever, then it comes dark, and you got more bridge down there, and then you going up. What about doing that with Ellis, how much cost could we save if we did pass where that last, uh, road comes off of? Now, I'm, I'm thinking it's, um, what it could be, it could be I have to.
Yeah, I was definitely getting my, moving that toward forest. When we had a meeting here, it says something about spending five hundred some thousand, three and a half miles, I ran straight out there and I clocked, and the first mile and a half, it were all the house.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And then that last two miles, and I think.
Just some farms, yeah.
Uh, no, I think that belongs to, uh, uh.
Timber cousin.
Out of Way or something.
No, no, I think it belongs to, I'm good friends with everybody, drawn a blank, he used on all the car dealerships up in North Georgia and everything, I think of it a minute. Regardless who owns, I wasn't mentioning that because of individual, what I'm getting at is, that last two miles, where property goes up like this on both sides, is woods on both sides of the road. At this point in time, this commission should not be spending the money to fix that up just as nice as the first mile and a half, so that individual now has very good increased property value, if somebody wants to go in there and build it and develop it. Well, don't worry about that road at that point in time, and that's why I said, I'm, I'm okay with doing part of Ellis, right?
Yeah.
And then taking rest of that money and going and doing another, maybe, that needs, but I would never vote to go ahead and do the whole entire other road.
That's where I was at, now I just put ten loads of rock on it.
And when I went down, like I said, I saw two little, it was one of the nicest dirt roads in the county.
Well, you just got through grade and thing. Ten load of rock on it.
That's when I went and said, man, if this had rocks, it would be in great shape, and to go back to Rocky again, and I'm not questioning the bids and so forth, that a flat rate of thirty dollars a ton, delivered, it's thirty nine thousand six hundred a mile for three inches. Point one, number one.
What dollar figure?
Thirty dollars a ton.
And what I did.
Figure three inches thick.
You, you gotta figure the, the, the square yards per ton for a mile, I got a chart.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you how that chart worked, cause I don't like yards, I like square footage, if I want to put. Now, look, if I wanna put four inch of gravel in ten thousand square foot slab, you divide it by sixty, that tells you how many tons. So if you take a square footage of a mile, alright, and divide it by sixty, that tells you it's seventeen hundred and sixty tons, divide that by four, see, cause you want, you're doing three inches, not four, so that comes out to four forty times three, which is thirteen hundred and twenty tons. At thirty dollars a ton, it's thirty nine thousand six hundred dollars all day.
What I'm using is the formula provided by Volga Materials, and it's based on the weight of the gravel at one inch thick for that given square foot, so it's a little bit different.
Um, they're still hauling, they're still hauling on, on the eighteen ton.
I know, my, my. My thing is, we gonna put down three inches of gravel, thirty nine thousand, the next problem we got is to get the guys on the motor grader, not to push it into the ditch.
Right.
That's the next. Well, once you do that, and you, you change your method, you don't pull dirt back in ditch.
Well, once you do that, I mentioned one thing before, that's when you should be fixing that road like you do a paint roll of bough holes. If you don't go down and motor grade it, you go down and find those sections and fill those in and work that spot, where you don't just go, okay, we got four bough holes, so let's start here. You know, you have to work it then, almost like fixing.
You hope to be able to, you know, fix the drainage and all, uh, and there again, we're, I mean, we're not talking about any particular road, I'm just saying, there's things that we, that we really don't think, when we go back, we're up here at, uh, church road, Mount, uh, Mount Hill, I can never, I wouldn't call it west. Mount Hill, we did pave just past where the house, a little bit more, just pick up the house and stop. We'd down the others if you guys want to, but we just, we just really need some reference on what did you do?
Exactly.
And, and what, what you want to do, you're gonna have your little big projects, you'll have your little big projects, we're gonna be out there, okay, we need to get that done. But then the next thing is what do we want to spend, we got dollars, uh, labeled on these blocks, and I would recommend that we kind of fix some projects that have a big impact, consume those, while we're sending, practically can, let's get out and get this league going, because, you know, we, we said it's an ongoing, uh, project. So what we gotta do, and, and, and to be able to keep it moving is, we gotta have the key folks, and if we lose those, we're right back to just pure maintenance.
We got ARPA too, right?
You got ARPA, yes, uh, and I don't, I don't have any of the numbers or figures on that today, but, um, uh.
It's about three point five, little, three point five million.
Oh. Could be, could be used on virtually anything you wanna use it. But before I did that, I would, uh, wait till we get our, uh, wait till we have our, uh, work session on other projects that we have. Cause there may be something you might wanna spend on that, cause there's buildings we gotta address, other stuff too, so.
The splosh, splosh can be used on buildings.
Yes, it can.
T-slosh. On the Arfa gear, like, T-slosh and all we can do.
Roads.
It, it, it could, the Arfa money has a much broader use than just the, the narrow things, typically with the broader funding sources that have a million limitations. You wanna use it.
Yeah, it's the other stuff. But we're frustrated part is, we're sitting here with the same building issues, you know, from my perspective.
Yeah, sure.
You, twelve months in, and we got same building issues, rough, rough, jail roof is fixed, but everything else, pretty much same way it was when I got here twelve months ago. The roads are worse, you know, some of that storm related, they, the flood and things, but, so there's been not much improvement there on the roads, it's, and the Arfa funded money is still just sitting there. So we got money there to do things we keep talking about, we need to do this, and we think about everything. We're past some of this thinking and planning, we gotta add, we wanna get splosh, the T-slosh, reboat them. Let's show deals in the next nine or twelve months, there's a lot of roadwork and.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what we is.
You gotta go here to get that done, and let's get it done. It's splosh and pay for some of the things that Arfa would have done, cause we used it in T-slosh. We gotta tie a little Arfa to do, right?
Yeah. You got, you got the Arfa, yes, you got the Arfa, you got the splosh, cause we need splosh, cause everything is attached to it.
There's no time, and then I don't.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't commit it to a prime within.
Arfa's already committed.
Arfa's already been, I guess, no deadline on that, that's not a big job, that's, uh.
And that's why I say we can, once we get through the, uh, uh, the other one, we should be good. And another thing you could use Arfa own is to address something here on personnel issues too, am I right, John?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so that may be something we wanna look at Arfa's. So.
We could, we have that buzzing increase, or adding looks this year.
You could, you got the jail ops, and doors proposal will be open tomorrow.
Yeah, because, that's, that's a ton of things we need to do there, you know, it's, you know, all these roads, you know, we had, they can't call them all, but that's what they work, you know? They come in with that fur road and.
Yeah.
Well, so that's addressed if we wanna shut.
Well, I would say the road was not, not great, but it wasn't nearly as bad as like it anymore.
Yeah.
Uh.
And the only reason it was graded actually is because Alice Brown called me over there to grade it before winter time. I wasn't going to grade Fern Road, and she begged me to come over there. I didn't know it was gonna rain three days later, so I went over and graded the road. And when it do, it rained, and then she blamed it on me, why did y'all come, well, she didn't, but the mob did. You know, I, I just done as I was asked.
She got a picture of the rain down in the.
Yeah, I'm telling you.
Importantly, you gotta do like we do, is check that weather.
Well, I mean, you check it, and then say three and a half inches of rain, and say the child, if you just, it's like chance of rain, that'll be good if it dampens its passing then.
You might have kids, I feel like I was, well, I look for muddy dirt road, you know what I mean?
And that's, that's the.
Well, I haven't seen a big deal.
Well, that's like, we're in Calwita, on our line with Calwita, Line Creek Road, Rising Star Road, they just got through, repaved and did a bunch of work there. And there's a section, here's a stop sign, and there's a big section, the wood set way up, and every time it rains, they come and do there and spinning around and donuts and tearing it up. So Calwita would end up there and put the big old bolt from the stop sign all the way to the edge of the wood, you ain't cutting through there no more. But they do it on purpose, they tear it up.
They really do, yeah.
Fun for them, terrible for us, but, uh, but, uh, anyway, yeah, I mean, we do have those funds today, I agree, we need to make a, uh, step forward. And I guess that's what we're kind of asking for some direction from you guys today. And we are gonna bring back the buildings, I just thought that was too much to couple everything together. Uh, but I think the buildings are important, and I think also the, uh, you know, like employee retention is important. And again, our, Arfa funds and general fund pretty much can be used in virtually anything.
Correct.
And then, uh, splosh is, uh, is capital, T-slosh is just transportation, so.
But I think the staff department should be the next thing to do, really, cause ten minutes into this, I was saying, today, we were giving them two biggest factors we can't do. Stuff internally, the little flies and.
Well, the, the staff, the internal is because we gonna have some people that's been doing it, let's go retire. Okay, that's, that's what you're gonna get. Now, what do most of the counties around here do? They hire new people. That's, you know, we've been, you know, just, you guys have been fortunate, we had some people that done this for a long time.
I would refer to like YouTube.
Yeah.
Or someone, you don't have to staff to do all the roadwork it means to be.
Right, right, absolutely, yeah, right.
Just as important was we need to identify what we wanna do, we gotta get our staff to be able to do that. So we can't spend the money, we don't have to.
And we've got plans and preparation of ready to address that, everything from a, the pace scaling process to incentives to recruiting people and, and even the HR process. So we are, even though we haven't brought it to you, we are working on it and having it ready for the next.
That's our new president.
Either that or buildings, it's, it's gonna be one of the next two or three.
That's how we.
My thing. I'm true, I'm the president. First of all, we have this.
People, so.
Well, I agree with, uh, Adam too, as far as a list of these roads that are priority. And I'm not concerned with, it's not my district, and why is all in her district, or why isn't his district? I'm concerned with the roads in the city of the county. So if there's a road down there in his district, you know, I got one that needs to be addressed, but he's got some serious issues.
Right.
Or like, I do have a little Fern Road and, uh, the other dirt road comes a bomb road, you know? But what I'm saying, I don't, I, I'm like, Kim, I don't think we need to look at it politically, we need to get something, I need to get something, he need to get something. We need to do what's really worst and work our way to what's not as bad.
Yeah.
That's what I.
You're being, I don't like those.
I mean, if they do, roads in need.
That's right.
They gonna get the help.
That's right.
Some of the lights.
That's right.
But I'm saying it's worse.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
If I got a dirt road here and it's aggravating.
My, 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 my miles, we don't pay you, what they say, I mean, we gonna resurface. We're ten miles.
Did you think?
Twelve.
How many miles?
Typically around twelve.
Yeah.
So.
But the worst miles every calendar.
You gonna get, you gonna get twelve.
You'll get probably eight of that.
Yeah, cause if you go to the worst ones, it's gonna cost more.
Once you, once you get to thirty percent base failure, like thirty percent of a mile long rather than base failure, it's, it's a, you gotta pull that for much. And that's a better six hundred mile, six hundred thousand mile.
Fix it was still.
That's like that road, and they were all complaining on, they got paid, drove there off people later, you know? It's a way you paid it now, they gonna be hungry, because if they didn't fix it now, then we got a little full debt.
Yeah.
And it was, it was at state, it'd be sad.
Mm-hmm.
So that, that's what some of that is, you do some to, to get out of.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you give them some that, you know, you, you give one that's twenty-five percent, you can do it for the, we need to do it, you gotta wait till it goes from a hundred and. Five, six hundred thousand.
That's what's, in the, in the plane there, you got deep factor, so. You may have, we may have to pick some roads to do full depth renovation, and we may pick some short roads to do something that may save it.
They may have, they may have mentioned this earlier, but I remember years ago, when we get to, it was the, uh, gravel, tar.
Right.
Sure, sure.
Certain surface treatment, you know, and.
It, well, when, when I first came here, we, uh, missions that had changed. We went, uh, really little tapping of that point, this, uh, player called about this, we need to play this road, we can just get one, we play this. They were paying a hundred eighty thousand dollars a mile. We, we built a surface treatment, and we got it for ninety thousand. That, that allowed us to go for that two or three roads they threw in, the six or eight roads. That's one of the reasons that kind of started us over.
Yeah.
Now, the problem with that is, the guys that do that really know what to do with it. They're not busy.
And we're.
A guy, just gotta have somebody.
But we found to get them, like, two people, one's in South Georgia, doing a really good job.
Fred would not, he would not be.
He would not be, once, Freddie Kitchen. So then, uh, one out of North Georgia, one work for us, very awesome. We had to go back and re, get rid of the splosh stuff, baby.
So it's obsolete then.
Yeah, well, it was, yeah, it was, it was in both sixty years ago, and then it came back.
I understand.
Yeah, the farm road.
I'm in the hood, it's all that.
That's probably, did my road and.
Yeah, well, Hudson.
Being eighty, last time it was bank, and the being eighty, they came in and they put down a layer of asphalt, it probably wasn't that big.
Right.
And I said, oh, man, they, we gonna have smooth road there. And then they come back with that tar truck spraying tar, and then they come back with a gravel truck, sprayed gravel on it, then they come back with a tar again, and they put little mini gravel on it. And that was it, that's why they made surface treatment.
Yeah.
Now, what was that?
That was the. Yup, so what the, the thin layer asphalt was left and trying to get all the bones.
That's what Hudson them used to do.
Uh.
Dean Hudson them used to do that.
Yeah, man, adventure.
Yeah, they, they did surface treatment.
So we didn't pay the asphalt.
No, they just did one layer.
Yeah, and you, you had it many, we, we finished it off here, but ain't nobody do it technical.
I, I think what I would do, I would go and run it outside, yeah.
And that's, and it's, it's.
Check.
Top above and line up.
So they might have to go all the time.
Yeah, yes, he taught that, done a lot of, they were all the years. They, they used to go to it and then did certain, very times.
So, had to make sure, I, I guess what period in terms of the big, you guys are saying, kind of put together, the roads that were the greatest. In the, the county. Just kind of have a list of those and how many you think you could do. That maybe share within the district or whatever, and see what we can think of.
I don't even know, we need to say, you know, all they got, they ain't about this.
List them out, and then with the cost, so, you know, that's.
He already had, he already had it down, had them graded, I think, yeah, graded that road, nah.
Those that are at thirty-two, thirty-three percent, and it feels damn lower than other type of road.
I was just going to give you now, the red.
Thirty-two percent, you can't just pay them.
And the problem that we had was, 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 I said, that, uh, I think it's what, parts.
Which road?
All the parts, where it became very controversial. Reason why it became controversial was because it had passed, there were many that, uh, for the whole board, everybody voted on it back, and it was submitted to this. And mid-twenty-nine, and the guy was ready to move on us to come and resurface the road. I mean, to dig the orphan, when that was a change request, man. That's what we don't want to do, is that going into it is to make sure that the roads that we're going to admit to, we don't change mid-strain. It's not as the way I'm intended, and for that being said, uh, if you can save a road, it's a very short section. Add it to the list, because we won't be able to do the miles that we need to do in the county because of the, and the length of the roads. Cause I think I heard that we pretty much have used up all the short sections of trying to supplement if that's done. Either look collectively, whether it's, you know, if it's a road that, you know, maybe you and I join or, but, anyway, we have, uh, but look at it in the totality. Unless they borrow them.
Right.
Same way with the dirt roads, dirt roads the same way.
That's right, number arms.
I don't know if y'all have ever tried this, I had mentioned it very, I mean, I've done it some places, but I pour a special mix sometimes, like I'll be up in, uh, doing the FedEx parking lot in the land. Where I got new sections up there, and they got to be, probably traffic traders on the private net, within twenty-four, forty-eight hours, traffic traders are gonna be on. But they had me do it one year at Christmas, so you could, that's stupid, they had, you know, how you say, you gotta spend the money, they had to do it. But we got a road with quite a few potholes on it. I don't know, we couldn't order a five thousand pound mix, um, without fly ash, and you could go down through there. And it don't have to be real wet, but you could fill that, blow that hole out, fill it in the pine tree, and pack it and go to the next one. You ain't gonna pack, you ain't gonna work out that hole again.
It's gonna be so hard that when the traffic hits it, they're gonna pound another hole in the other side. It's.
Down one of those.
That's why I wanna get that tar.
That's really not that.
That's why I wanna get that patcher running, so you can put a tar and rock patch over it. That way they expand and contract with the road. You put that hard cement out there, and a car's gonna hit it, it'll impact it, they're getting it, and when it drops off, and it's just gonna be another pothole here and here. Patch him, it's gonna be, you know what I'm saying? Whereas that car truck will cover, you can just cover a whole patch. You got a bunch of little potholes in a, in a road, just do you a square, and put it off smooth, that way you just go over it. I mean, does that make sense?
Well, yes, it does. You go down the hole in, flush with asphalt there and screed it off.
If not graded, well.
It, there's no law.
With that, fine, it's still gonna like a boat.
It'll still expand and contract and bust. It just, it's just harder than the road surface.
So you're talking about the cars hitting it at.
Yes, I mean, either way after a while, I mean, it will, it will. That was, is that dry mix?
What's that?
Is that dry mix you're talking about?
It's, I mean, it's pretty close to a dry mix. I mean, I can take it for a commercial parking lot where I fixed the bad spot, and I cut out three by three here, and two by two here, you can go back there now. All around, it's all broken up, my stuff is still solid.
Yeah.
So, I'm just talking about so we don't have to go put it off.
Yeah.
Right. Labor wise, if you're going out there and putting the holes in, in two weeks from that, you're sending guys out there to put the patch and the holes again.
Yeah, that's why I want that factor.
Yeah, so the coal.
Like on my road, I was gonna do that one day, I was just, wanted me a yard and a half to take my guys and go down there and fill all the holes.
If you go out there to a house, looking for anything to find.
About, right.
So you know, you break it, you know, prepare the surface, it ain't gonna be a matter of time, it's gonna be messy on the. So I think the asphalt patch, the holes are not getting blown out or cleaned out, or it may be wetting down or whatever, and, and, you know, and it. And then when you put it in there, and I know you have to allow from, from patch.
About one inch.
Bring it so much above the road, and where it's smooth, and it ain't still a hole. If it's still a hole there when you get through, it, it ain't gonna last no time.
The, the coal patches not as durable as what you're talking about in your car, yeah.
This coal patch is, is, is the best we've had in a long time. The holes are real good.
Yeah, the last, I, I've noticed that.
Oh.
But as he's, I'm gonna finish this, but as he's saying out there, and I don't know if your guys are doing it, and I would gladly go out with them. But if they just go up to a pothole, shovel it off the trailer and tamp it, and go to the next one, we're wasting taxpayer's money.
They're potential.
If you, if you, cause you know a pothole goes in like a little.
Right.
Yeah. If you don't take time to take a mat and just chip the edge out around it, get a little bit thickness there too, and then like you said, blow it out, if you're not doing that on a hole.
Yeah.
Then I don't know why we're sending them out.
Yeah.
But it's just a waste of money.
But if you got fifteen in the length of this, you got fifteen in the length of this room, it's gonna take some time, especially if they little, or they're big.
That's all right, if you're not going back building again for a long time.
Well, you're lucky. That's, that's true.
As long as you're not in the base area, fire section, cause if it, if it's that section in the base fire.
And that's what most of it is, most of it is.
If it's a big area like that.
I mean, it's a wet spot or something's caused that, caused that hole to.
If you got isolated patch out there and the rest of the road is pretty shake.
Yeah.
Take the time to dig it out, square it up.
You got a low spot or a base failure with fifteen to twenty, I'm married, you just, you don't go out there and do that, and then three weeks later, it's gonna be four, five more. Just simply because it's.
Cause the road's moving.
Exactly.
But I mean, we can take a look at whatever, you know, we need to be.
Yes.
Uh, I, I guess at, at this point, I, I wanna make sure we're doing what Ford wants to do. Yeah, go back to the LeBeg. Kind of come to you guys with a list of the, the priority, whether it's the need for any, uh, work though. The ones that are really the top priority, the ones that's critical. And then, and then let you guys kind of pick which ones you want, well, that. But, uh, but I know we're gonna have to do some work on that, try to get that done when, soon. And then in terms of the gravel, it's mainly, uh, uh, I think, uh, I would obviously use fur road and all this. That, you guys have done a lot of work with fur road, bringing gravel in and doing some things there. And I think, and, and, and these guys do a lot more about construction than we. And I kind of think if we, if we concentrate on getting that gravel out and dusting these things really good, here in the winter months. I think, and hopefully cut out a lot of our calls and, and I know it's kind of expensive to get out there, but it's probably a good buddy, well, sir. Uh, and we'll be able to get something out and show, since, and we're, we're out there working, we're spending your splosh, uh, T-slosh dollars for inputting the road.
So that's one of the problems, once you get into a bad situation, you end up spending bad money to get out of it. I mean, there's no. I mean, there's no way, you gotta throw money at it to some degree, can't just throw money at a problem, it will never go away.
Right.
But when you let a problem go this long, like we've done some of these roads, it's gonna cost money, you shouldn't have never had to do. We're just wasting it.
But we're.
We're rolling bags.
Options all, we gotta go.
All, yeah, to to do.
We just gotta go do it now.
And we just, we didn't have a T spot dollar, not until the state was allowed, so.
Basically, basically what I, the way I feel is, say, we got a road that's twen- at twenty eight percent.
Right.
Well, we can do the cheaper version on it, where you got a road that's at thirty two percent, you're gonna have to do what the full reclamation rights.
Right.
Well, we might as well, if we wait two more years on that road, we still gonna cost the same time.
Right.
But if we wait on this twenty eight percent road, it may wind up costing us that full reclamation too, so I think we need to get. Some of the roads that right on the birds is, uh, needed to add.
Right, yeah, but that's more thing, thing we gotta do. But we're all up to the point where we got several roads there, we're gonna put the safety.
Well, that's very.
Because the problem, the one.
It's not citizenly safety of the people.
Don't understand all of this.
I probably.
We go up to how many people live on the road?
When they skip across the road that they think you don't need it, but this one needs it, then they go, oh, they did it for such and such.
I I bet people want their road by search.
People.
Cause it's asphalt.
It's actually the potholes, dude. It's like our asphalt. You know, like, yeah, we want to spend.
I just, I'm saying is.
And we got, there are any roads that over thirty percent.
There's, the the break is thirty two percent to twenty eight percent. But here is thirty two, thirty one, thirty, twenty nine, twenty eight, that's, that's usually your full depth reclamation break, from like, then it drops from there, twenty seven, twenty six percent. And then twenty five, twenty.
Okay, so twenty eight cents ref.
Full of everything. But like, if you're right on the.
Right on the. So what?
I was thinking this morning.
So have you got any roads that are in that category?
There's a good many.
Good many.
There are over a half a dozen this year, weren't there?
And then if there's a length and what, college, but I didn't. We're trying to fit it, but then.
But I'm just saying that we do this full of depth reclamation on these roads, then. By the time we get those done, the next category might be same, in that same category.
Yes.
I I, yeah, I think you're right.
So we all going from there.
Maybe do the head travel road, full death, and then do some of the other roads, not though we could be proud.
The full debt is expensive, but like Chad called, it told me the life expectancy of that road is thirty years.
Much better.
I I think what we need to do is you guys tell us which road is critical, need to prepare. But it's not, grant the body, safety, all that stuff. And then each commission to come back, little list, roads out of your history. That you want done, whether it's from a noise level or.
Obviously, that's.
And see where they fit into that, and then we go, we'll decide what we want.
Yeah, like I said, that life cycle, well, each time I get back here twenty five years and the more full depth reclamation, you got to closer than get to that.
Yeah.
So you have to read the script.
But it's very expensive.
That's what leaves the road, you know, two thousand dollars per day.
Yeah, cause I went out there to see how they're doing that, because I'd see everybody coming and go, just leave it alone, it's better taken down than it was, you know, when they did the first. Cycle before they, you know, do the, the concrete mixed up and they chew the road up, smooth it out and they leave.
Then it looks like.
Everybody's going, golly, it's great like it is, leave it alone, you know? And we'll talk about, see what they're talking about and Chad explained it to me.
I was still like, go down the section we did, very well, you had to get a mirror, then turn, go back, go down the section, state did. And take a look.
They're not that.
It's, uh, yeah, it's, uh, it's a world of difference. So then on top of that, um. Uh, are you guys fine with us starting to make kind of a priority list for dirt roads and start, we just want to receive.
But they have, you say the way we do.
Yeah, anyway.
Don't need, uh, work session, you probably don't need to make a bunch of dough, but all we need is direction. And if you guys are all okay with that, we'll.
I am.
We're gonna talk about it, it's not coming free. And I I know, I'm supposed to open up today.
Yeah, it wasn't open the rapid day, but it's supposed to open up coming.
But the break.
The. And and the road is held up better than I thought it would, and I did notice this morning that even there where some of the. Uh, speed books are, they're getting to develop some pilots, and so go get into weather, if if they can get it opened up, we don't have to go in winter. Be a lot better than that, but there's also somebody that we don't have to just have, we've worked. And what I thought we would do with that, so can you guys, if Mike just, uh, once it's done. Mike just approached G dot via the same, look, can you help us do?
I think we should.
The way you told me, it's definitely the traffic problem. And Mark, the reason that it survives so well is there, these guys have really been on top of hitting those potholes as soon as they start before. And another thing I I I thought Mike would do, you guys tell me, we we didn't have the speed books there, which we put them there and caused a little bit of traffic. And I kind of thought about, oh, the people that live out there, just see, hey, were there still, if you were to table up?
We got a call today where they were asking about taking them up.
Really?
That one person, that was one person.
I would even, if I lived there, I wouldn't want them.
I would not, not.
I think we need to take them, and go down to that Sunday being loop.
They hit them so hard.
Just plot it down and put some more out there.
Put four out.
But that's what I told them we'd work on.
Yeah.
And the other request I have, I mean, because, uh, I know St. Bruce, so pick up trash, I mean, no, I mean, it's like a diamond brown, and then it's a shame, you know?
We got it today.
Have a go to that.
About every other.
Who did it?
Yeah. Yeah, it's amazing, two weeks, it looks like.
We done rode in Alabama, they're the diamonds, I'm telling you, you talking about it trash everywhere.
Wow.
And then down the creek.
That's nice.
What, Jade was seeing him, huh?
It's, uh.
Will cost, yeah, it's seriously. So, okay, so so I think we've got our direction, we need to bring back this list to you guys.
What kind of timeline are we looking at, Dan? What kind of timeline are we looking at on that?
Uh, well, we need to have the big by the next meeting, okay? So I would say we could have a list of roads, guys, uh.
Paid for it anyway.
Paid for it, and I'd say probably the dirt part too, and he's got, he's got a lot of work on it.
Also, brother. And if we get bridges.
Gonna take me a little bit on.
I got three bridges that need work.
Are they wooden or?
No, they're concrete.
What bridges are they?
Trail, Trail Bridge, some JW Dunn.
What? We're gonna have, we drove.
Gordon Mate.
Drove a fifty thousand pound extra right across, they said, no.
Awesome. Gordon Mate.
You have.
Didn't do anything, but they, they.
Last year. This year it's not.
And then I'll be able to raise it up, you know, still.
Trail Bridge and JW Dunn.
Yeah. Um, Gordon Mate. Yeah, and these.
Seven branches.
JW Dunn and Gordon Mate.
Need to figure out what y'all wanna do with, uh, seven branches. Seven branch road.
Yeah, we got a possibility. Moment, yeah, I had, no.
I had, the, uh, one of the things they said. Barricades.
When I'm closing, so we got.
Barricades.
Got all rails in front of, in front of back. Piles down in the woods, I'm gonna try to salvage it, build set a cane, I'm gonna try to get it, the pipe washed down the, down the woods.
That's what we thought.
Down the woods, I'm gonna try to get it out, build set a cane, but.
You can't get down, you know, there you can.
Well, he, if if you can without getting off the right one.
Well, that's, I said, that that the home, yeah, cause someone told me that, and I said, I told that, I said, I gotta quit, we gotta, we're good. And they said, yeah, get on the home on the property.
Through their trespassing, you know, out of our head.
Yeah, that's all right, that that property that washed down.
If you, is that cheap, I just get a new one to do that.
Yeah, it might be better, I mean, that would make you damage down the.
No, that's not, that's not, that ain't get, bring it up with it.
It's probably. But you can get a new one for the. Three, three. It's probably the, I got holes in it.
And then you'll.
Yeah.
Well, then that's where the phone calls need to be made, and do you mind, whether we use it or not, do you mind if we go get the pipe?
Yeah, he's, he do, he do is he go.
You're not getting on my property, they go, okay, don't call us later to come get it, cause it's yours now.
That's right.
I make that phone call.
But then the pipe be done with.
Make a phone call, call them, no, and just go, can we have permission to go get that pipe? And if he says, no, you're not getting on my property, they go, okay, well, don't call us later to come get our pipe, cause it's now yours.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, when we get this list out, we're, we're gonna continue to put out gravel on the, what the roads, and we get a lot of, uh, calls on.
You got.
And, uh, you know, and everything, have a lot of houses, and, uh, go from there. Uh, again, I would suggest that we, we need to start looking at sending, uh, we keep it to date, but you guys let us know. Uh, what will work for you, but I'd like for you to set our next work session, cause, uh, I would, I would have been shortly after the first year, I would have known the direction going.
We, we can do it today.
Can't make a motion in the main.
Yeah, so it's a work session, so.
Oh, yeah.
Set the new.
Yeah.
Okay. I got.
We could, y'all could tell. Well, well, what about after our, to get the year going, why not after our, uh. First nine o'clock meeting in January? Why wait till February month?
Yeah, I wouldn't wait till then, I would slate January earlier. I, yeah, let's see if you can do that.
You know what I'm saying, like we had a meeting today, we came back, but instead of going off the lawn.
We, we.
And and waiting, you know, we was through there at twelve, we had waited two hours.
Yeah.
Why not have our nine o'clock meeting and then if we need to grab a snack, and then you ride on these.
Yeah, we could.
Do it early before the night. And and if that's a follow up today.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, the day was just.
I know, but I'm just saying, for January, I don't know why we couldn't.
Yeah.
Uh, have our agenda where we get through pretty quick, it's nine o'clock meeting, and then we take a break and then go right on into the.
January two. What we can do with that is.
Stating into January, it goes a little bit longer, you have a lot more things on that.
Oh, okay, so have it just have that period, not wait till same day, that's fine.
Well.
No, he, he, what, what I was on, you know, you suggested was, uh, early workshop prior to the meeting of twenty six.
That's what they have been typically doing, it's like you're doing four o'clock.
Oh, yeah, we, we, we come back and move at four o'clock for the evening meeting.
That, that what we.
Or do it in the morning, like a gene, so you do it, you do it in the morning.
And I hope we can tell them that we'll have a workshop. Followed down one, can we notice that way out? We have.
How many, how many of our fat numbers are gonna be here on the twenty sixth?
Well, that's, I'll put it out for a week.
See, I thought like, oh shit, I thought like thirty.
No, you keep talking about twenty six, okay?
No, 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 I, I would just say typically in the past, y'all done it like an hour, an hour and a half before the nine meeting.
So we can do one or two, whatever the board wants to do, come in at four o'clock on the twenty sixth and have our meeting at six. Or we can have it, uh, right after a nine o'clock meeting, the first one in January.
I. Well, Chris, Chris said, it didn't take some time, got to, it takes some time getting together, I would prefer.
Do it.
Like a change, and then what was like to do a system, Mike could do, uh, one that at, uh, your first meeting is anywhere, after the regular meeting is over. And then, as you said, being real, we could have a, uh, early one.
Early one.
Uh, and do the other day.
Yeah, and that way we'll get. So it's off down that one, more breath for twenty, twenty.
And that, and that gets you guys, they'll be here anyway, don't have to go to that.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, and we won't talk about first day.
Yeah.
Right, right?
I've got a couple more clips that we can, this can be better.
I've, I've.
No, you got it.
What kind of grants are out there for dirt roads or paved road projects?
So there, so I'm working on, I'm working on two of them. One is a, a broader surface transportation network grant, which we can go out and ask for five, six million dollars. Another one is.
For what, you said transportation?
Yes, sir, uh, paving, dirt road or or cars. So it would be to pave, to gravel, or to replace cars for that one specifically. There is a rural business development grant that I would like to apply, that also lets you do for road infrastructure, but for the IDA and that new international circle. Um, whether we apply for that or whether the IDA applies for that, we can figure all that out, but both of those would be February twenty eighth. And I should have a draft to start circulating maybe middle of next week.
Uh, they's got their own staff and board, they supply their own grant. Well, we got here, should be doing their work. That's pretty simple to me.
Um, it, yes, sir, that's true, but we have, what we do, probably help the authorities in areas that these have skills that they don't, they will make the.
I understand, but we're, we're sitting here saying we short staffed and do things, and and we got a grant extra. We got a chance to get a five, six million dollar grant, they could do nothing but dirt roads, paved roads, and we might not get it, but we're gonna do it for another authority that has a board and staff.
Just hear the.
It's gonna first. Absolutely first.
And since he mentioned that, I would want to ask you that, you know, where are we at on grants, what are you working on, and I keep hearing, I'm, I'm working on this, working on that, I'd like to. You know, an update probably at the twenty sixth of where we at, in other words, have you finished it, have you submitted it? I like to see what's being done, not just.
Yeah, that's, yes, sir, that's what I mean, I can have a draft ready for you guys to look at, but I've got, I've got all of it at any point. But if you were more details.
No, I don't wanna know when it's gonna be submitted, what timeline, are we looking at, getting answers?
February twenty eighth.
Yeah, you're a kid.
I'll be looking at that.
So just to clarify what I was saying, I don't have a problem helping, uh, shoot. After this one is done, you can do all of you want for them or anybody else, but not till the board gets what they need.
Sure.
For a county to get new roads right.
I mean, there's a grant out there.
Five hundred of them.
But that's a possibility to get the kind of money you're talking about, I mean, that's news to me, there's a possibility to get it, that's priority, you know?
And then Senator Alsoff, forget what it was called, rebuild some project, five, six billion dollars coming into Georgia for roads.
I think that's part of it, this is the raise, pretty what the acronym is, but it's a raise, I think this is a part of it.
What you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
So that's.
Let, let me, let me just clarify, I was a little rather concerned with these, I've, I've talked a lot, I hadn't let these guys talk, where are you thinking of?
Not really, other than the bridges before.
Okay.
Uh. I don't know if now should bring it up or not, it's, uh, Ted Anderson over there in Manchester.
We talked, I talked there about that.
I haven't done any work in, uh, since two thousand ten, I think, well, Tyler Hill did. To that road.
And it's basically just the driveway.
It's just driveway, we have work that you've been building, what we always say.
It's Ted Anderson going out of, uh.
In Manchester.
Out of Manchester to a lady's property across Fijian Creek.
Yeah.
She claims that the county used to take care of it in the past. There was an old fellow that lived there, and I think he passed away and his son or daughter took the house and stayed there for a while. She moved out, it got abandoned, and now I think some of his families want to get back there, and the pipes are washed out.
Does it count?
Going to.
The center line of the creek probably is south of Manchester, north would be in unappropriated Maryburg.
Right.
But. Uh, to me, looking at it, looking as if it were, rather than we had stopped working and really, and just closed that along, that would go. I, when you're working a road, a driveway or a road, it wouldn't help.
So I'm sure she's gonna call back.[1663.31]
Done in the past, and and that was great that they did it, but you saw, we can't get permission to come on that property right now, so. We had the same thing over there with another road, uh, we're gonna get the guy who wanted to come in. And the road had been closed, what's the code, and we said, we can go back and out and go back. They put one in, get their driveway, but it wasn't us.
So I know she's gonna call back and wanna know how she's supposed to get her property.
She got a road, she got to move it across. I would say just uh, my recommendation would be to have her make her request, writ request, and to the city races will bring it back and be.
And be something. Back to the board?
Yes. With the with, and we can just do.
That's inside the city. Inside road is inside the city.
Both the management of uh, dirt on the creek. What was the name of the creek? Using three green, then that jumps in. Ted Anderson, north of that subdivision that turned it into county, everything's south of Manchester. So I think the line of the creek is the last. Or the city limits, but.
The subranch is gonna be fixed. Well, that's about all I got, other than the bridges. I would come up with a plan on that, Bill and I, I guess.
This is, projects come up, I'll update, my sheets are commitments, so I know how much money we have in the bank, how much we have, we spend. In the L G I P, the local government investment pool, you see the T S F's, two point five million, that ninety thousand's the interest that we're earning. So until we have to pull money from it, finance will do their best to keep it in there and give investment, and you know, get the interest rate. That we getting free money off of just investing into the government pools, so take advantage we can to get every extra dollar we can to help the citizens of Maryweather County.
So you say we're earning that ninety thousand?
Yes, sir.
Since when?
Uh, this is probably over four or five months, it's about fifteen thousand a month right now. We had a little bit in there. Just like the general fund we saw this morning, six million, we're gaining about twenty five thousand a month right now, and that was with the five million, so we're gonna be up to thirty. And if I can put another million in by the end of this month, with tax commission, we'll be at about thirty five thousand in general fund, just off of you know, non-taxpayer money, just interest free, that we can use to benefit, you know, employees. Anything that's not taxpayer related, so Bill's done a tremendous job setting me up to keep Maryweather in a good place, and, you know.
If you continue.
Continue, just, we make sure we do smart investments with the counties, man.
Good job, man.
This uh, Chicago grad.
Thank you, but I'm not through. I'll start Monday, I'm not Monday, just January eighth on my masters.
We appreciate it.
If I don't, he's gonna run off on me, so I have to keep myself.
She worked very hard, yeah, at the same time, working full-time job, full-time boss. What is, what is the, oh, I'm, y'all talking about the money, what's the dollar amount that has to stay in place the whole land bill? It uh, we go back and 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 what's happened, we have a series of dollars we've been. If we went back and if we had to get our auditors, give us that number, they were doing pests, you know what we got in there now?
It's about eight, almost eight hundred fifty thousand sitting in the.
And how long?
Until, yeah, until they decide to close it, in my experience, the little government has been, the E P D are coming to tell you when it's supposed to be.
But they do that, so if anything happens, their money's there.
It's sitting in investment pool, gaining about three or four.
Well, yeah, I knew that, but still, why couldn't some kind of. We we had. Letter, letter of credit or whatever that says, you know, anything happens, you know, such and such bank is gonna loan us the money to do what we gotta do. And we use that money.
Drawing interest too?
Yes, sir, he's drawing about three or four thousand, it's it's.
Yeah, it's not small enough. What what they're gonna make you do then is to hold that in there in escrow. I mean, if we reduced it down, uh, it doesn't make a lot of sense because of all of it. So you end up a super for the gallon, you have to approach it anyway. We've never really taken any hits off site, uh, we have some delay, which is natural, but best they do is to kind of keep talking to our auditors, and see what dollars about things are supposed to be. Because you, the the county can put on a pledge to full faith credit to the gallon. Lady of what, but uh. If they was to come back and go, well, you need at least six hundred thousand, we had a full letter of credit from the the bank in Manchester or whatever, it says, you know, they they need the money, the money's there, you know, then we could pull that and use on roads. We, I mean, we're checking, seeing what the auditor, we'll get our dig and shot at the auditor, we'll talk to them, but we'll we'll check and see, we, I know we called it down, so we felt like we had more than they did, still feel like we've got, still more there than it uh, like I say, while they were losing, there's two for, we got that, that'll be a year.
Is it, the auditors will be here, will be audited in February, so probably by March, they'll get everything analyzed and say, if we need more money, or we can reduce it. Um, we also had a, I would, I mean, if we needed to, we could take out geo bonds to pay for land closure, like I said, you can take out a loan from a bank, we got plenty of revenue source and a fund balance, it's about ten, eleven million dollars, so the creditworthiness of the county is 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 up there.
And and of course, you guys, we're talking, consider they talk about interest, we're gonna be part of it. And had been that many years ago, we should be talking about interest, they about. Having a ball of money, so, you know, pushing forward to believe this job.
Um, so in addition to our offer, the stuff that we've mentioned, another thing we're gonna be able to bring into the discussion is a little bit more data. Uh, taking the public works ticketing data, we can do it by road and by by actionator, like replacing pulver, moving ditches, moving trees. So we're gonna know what, where where it was done and what was done. And we've also got a number report from the tax assessment that shows the number of struck, parcels with structures per road, so when we're looking at, we can tell, you know, two structures versus twenty five, or um, this road has had three tickets on the same pole, so we need to go out and do that, so we'll be able to factor a lot of that in. And for the dirt roads, Barry, last month had these guys go out and eyeball probably eighty percent of them. And we're working on entering all that into our spreadsheet, and that'll help us to help you guys as well.
And mileage.
And mileage, and help you guys in all those main stages. So you guys think it's that?
No, I mean, it's just, you know, with the roads not part of it, I have to make sure, you know, whenever we give our submissions, things come in and be available. But I definitely give you guys a sure, because let's say, if it's on dirt road and they decided we're going into it, we gotta make sure they go it's, it should, they have to go, the road's just bad. And then, um, yeah, work with the guys on the roads.
We'll get Bill in a minute, but but come up and introduce yourself.
Really excited about this. This is Christie Gillespie, she started with us on Monday, and she's taken on the role that I have done assistant. So she's already made a huge impact, um, helping me, her child, we did records done, and so I'm looking forward to working with her, I'm so excited to talk to her, so, thank you.
She did a great job. I told her that, we scared her off, we go get her over at Bounce. You know, all that, and with, you know, a lot of times, they're all to the hurry, I said, just check it out, get recorded with them.
I just thank I heard you guys, all the work with hills, that that gives me an idea, we're just talking.
Y'all have more knowledge than we do on that kind of stuff, but we will help take the cities. And uh, I guess I will ask, I I give out, thank y'all, appreciate you coming today, I hope this was helpful. I would try to, uh, so we work, and uh, we'll try to have a little, uh, we will have, I'll try to have a little slip presentation for you guys next time, something very similar, that we got here on the T S F's. And we do need to start thinking about the T S F thing, we gotta get out.
So what do you think they can do for that arrangement, so?
Can you talk it up? Educate, educate. Let us get you the packets and a full information first. Gotta talk to your folks.
Want to buy some signs?
Yep. T S F's, dollars, you're working. We need to get some of those signs, because if we start raveling these dirt, we'll put them out. Some ads on the paper, get ready to vote on it. We have to be careful, we can't spend any county burden, but, okay, so you can't spend it, but what you can do, we should talk to the newspaper about it, more likely, rather article for it. Talk to all the suit groups, and what I do, when I go talk to, you guys, officials can say, I want you to vote for it. I agree the king, Luke King, but what we do is, so we'll give you the facts, here's the fact. Twenty bills of what this will produce, do you, would you like twenty bills added to your tax bill, and you want to pay it this way, with other people are paying it forty fifty percent? That's gonna be in the fact, being. Once you get that together. We'll we'll start getting that together, and uh, we've done that for, I've done that for S F's, every S F's, and that we had, we had here. Did it for the fire district, did it for the uh, the six F's, and we've been successful through all of everyone. Yeah. But I'm not talking about forty five, fifty five, I'm talking about seventy five plus, and so, that will be our teaching.
That's what they say, this is the packing that was together, when it was.
Y'all take a look at it, I think, of course, just come out of the books, though, if you play that path, you look like you're doing, you're looking like a little pretty early, you know. Now, I didn't do it to begin with, it's a work session, you don't have to have a motion to go in and go out and all that, right? No, I'm saying that you just leave the the clerk, just say. So we got anybody else that has anything they want to say, add or question? They'll have a motion for us to, they're gonna just. And second, we got motion by Miss Rose, and we got a second by community for calling all the. We don't get a vote, we're gonna vote just.